What are you doing? What are you doing?
Smelling my skin.
Why? Why are you smelling your skin?
It doesn't matter. That's not what we're gonna talk about.
Yeah, it is, Jabs. People need to know before we get into the heavy stuff.
I don't know.
What you're doing. What are you doing?
Just smelling my skin.
Oh, God, smelling your skin?
Smelling my skin. On the road again.
Oh, boy.
Can't wait to get on the
Road again.
Now, listen.
Yep, 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 yep.
I found you something since we're traveling so much.
Yeah.
So much. I guess that's like our life now, right?
This was, this was an accident. We, this was an unplanned trip, obviously.
Well, we're gonna be a little cagey about it and we'll, we'll reveal it later. But anyways, I found this thing called the Knee Defender.
Ah, what's that?
Have you heard of this?
No, I have not.
Okay, so it's this, these two clamps. It's called the Knee Defender. It's these two clamps that you put like on the tray table.
Okay.
So that the person in front of you, it locks it in place so that the person in front of you cannot.
On a plane?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah.
For very tall people. It also comes with a note. A like pre-made little note that you're supposed to give to the person in front of you. And it lets them know very nicely that you're an asshole.
Really?
And they're gonna need to deal with it.
Pop that up. What site is that?
It's called Knee Defender.
Ah, Knee Defender.
Knee Defender.
Is that a dot com or a dot org, you think?
Um, it looks like it's a dot com, but it's on like gadgetduck.com. Anyway.
Oh, there we go. This is, uh, are we doing this now?
What? Are you getting it?
I think I might have to order this.
So I tried to order it. It wasn't gonna come in time for this crazy trip that we're about to take, but I think in general, if anyone can do it, so what I've heard from it is that people are very
Just ordered. So
Blammo.
I mean, that's how fast you can order things PayPal wise. Gone, done, out.
Complaint that people have is they're very nervous. They end up just not giving the card. Right? And then you just, the person thinks that their shit is broken, right?
Sure.
Because I, I think there's very few people that would want to be that confrontational. Right? Besides you.
You don't have a problem with it, but
You don't have a problem with it. Would you give the card or not give the card, though?
Not give the card.
Not give the card.
Nope.
And I think that's
Wouldn't give the card.
That's been the consensus of everyone that's used it is, yes, it's, it's cool. We do use it. It works. Most of these people are six-two and, and taller.
Yeah.
Um, and it's, to them, it's been great, but the shame.
I just ordered it right now on the thing. I don't have the fucking shame of it.
No, you don't.
I, I don't at all. Uh, cause the problem is with this many last-minute flights for interviews, you can't sit first, right? You just, it might not be available or whatever.
Or if you're traveling that much, you just, we don't go first class everywhere.
Here's the thing. We've talked about this on the show before of the coach has, has gone way up where it's like people don't, people don't wanna fly in first anymore. Um, because they don't give you like all the shit. They used to give you like meals and TVs and, um, so people aren't doing it therefore.
Advantage of all the stuff that first gives you. So it's like, what am I doing?
They're lowering the prices of first and they're giving you free bags. So it's just like, alright, well, we're only like eighty bucks off of what I would have paid in coach with ninety bags and all that other shit.
Yeah.
Cause we have to travel with like sixty bags for, um, sound equipment and everything else for, for all of this shit. Uh, tonight's flight, that was super last minute. We will probably be in twenty-nine B.
The toilet, which is fine, but if you have your Knee Defender.
Correct. Problem is
You get that extra three inches.
Didn't have that on the last, uh,
Didn't have it on, you won't have it on this one.
No, but I will have it after that.
And you're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. And I, and I will use it and I will not give them a card and say, I don't know, man, your fucking seat is probably broken, so. Uh, sorry. Sorry about it, cheese.
Right? Just watching them like
Yeah, sorry, I was sorry about it, cheese. And they're just like, uh, uh.
I think, I think a Knee Defender has been used on me before. Cause I've been like, dude, this is not going back.
Right.
Or it could just be broken.
Been a tall person. Cause I'd do it too.
Where you just like push your knees up against it?
If I get in before them, I go knees hard against the seats and then they can't fucking move it. If I get to sit in coach, sorry, sorry, dude. Six-three and a half.
If you have to suffer, we all suffer, right?
I'm a large man. No, not that. It's just like
Yeah.
Hey, man, that extra two inches anyways, like I, cause I'm courteous to other people. I don't fucking put my seat back. Ever. Ever. If I'm in coach, I don't put it back cause I don't wanna fuck up somebody else's shit. Two inches isn't important enough for me that I wanna ruin somebody else's three or four hours on a flight.
Right.
It's not. So I, I'm reverse courteous of it of like, hey, man, I realize the struggle here, you know?
Right.
Seats are getting smaller in coach. They're trying to jam more in.
I think I got us exit rows this time.
Eh, look at you. Did you really?
Yeah.
Alright. Fuck yeah. Way to go, Jabs.
You're welcome.
Proud of you. That is unexpected. You were learning.
We paid a little bit extra for it, but
Eh, whatever.
Are you gonna be able to assist, though, in the event?
Yeah, ripping the door off? If I would have been left on one of those flights that was on the runway for seven or eight hours at LaGuardia.
Oh, blammo.
I would have
Open, out.
Cause it's like a five hundred dollar fine. I would have fucking done it.
Jumped to your
Yep. Just jumped, had the whole thing deflate or inflate and then
Slid down.
Slid down and just said, eh, fine me, dude. Give me that five hundred fine.
Find me, bro.
Move on with my life because I am not doing it.
Find me.
You remember what happened in Atlanta when we got stuck on the tarmac when you were pregnant?
Yeah.
When all the electricity went out, there was this magical blackout?
Nightmare, yeah.
Um, I said, fuck it, let's just walk off the tarmac. And they were like, no, you can't do that. And I was like, better send a bus or I'm walking off the fucking tarmac.
Right.
Cause I don't really give a shit about your rules.
Sure.
Um, cause it was
Find me, bro.
Completely, find me. It's complete chaos out there. I was like, no.
Oh, it really was chaos. And then
I'll walk off the fucking tarmac. I don't give a shit.
My personal nightmare where we had to like run through the subway thing and like be running from the guard, like no.
Yeah, and you can't
Just go.
Yeah.
Just go. I'm gonna need you to fucking forget.
To, to the T where I am a rule breaker.
I just, when I get away with something, it needs to be completely gotten away with. It can't be like, and I don't mind doing that. If I get away with it, like hiding something somewhere, getting away with whatever.
Sure.
But if there is someone that I need to like confront
Yeah.
To get away with something, then that's
You're out of there.
That's the no-go. Sure, sure, sure.
Speaking of confrontation, Jabs, um, wearing your shirt. Wearing all the mom's shirt today.
Thank you.
Uh, read it, read it for the audience, please.
Uh, Masonboro Forest for neighborhood schools.
There it is. Uh, we talked about this on the show. I was gonna give my big speech, my big rally cry.
Oh, it was gonna be
It was gonna be my Field of Dreams moment.
We nominated you. We all gave you what to say. We were so excited that we were gonna have a
A nice time at the auditorium, public speaking.
To, yeah, one of those town halls, very Field of Dreams, right?
Yeah. That's what, that's what I felt like.
Very Terrence Mann.
Um, we, yeah, exactly. There it is. Look at you pulling out the Field of Dreams references.
You know what I mean? Like that when they all went to the
And I thought, I thought that was gonna be the big
Yes.
Deal of it, you know?
The forum.
Yeah, the big stink.
Things you always see where the parents are shouting out, we won't stand for this.
Correct.
None of that.
No.
Everyone was very subdued and then they just fucking shut us up.
So here's the thing, they were not subdued. And I talked about this on Drinking Bros yesterday. I'll talk about it today on here. The moms were not subdued whatsoever. Like you could feel the angst in the room. And then when that motherfucker, Matthew Cropper, from Cropper G I S, um, came on stage and was like, you know, we're not gonna talk in a public forum. We stopped doing that about ten years ago cause we found that it just didn't work.
Hmm. Did it not?
Did it not? Because
Or did it work too well?
Seems like it probably worked too well. And now you wanna, uh, settle the
Shut us up.
The, the
You want it to be easier for you. So you want to separate, so it, from the very beginning, I'm sure you talked about on this Drinking Bros, but as soon as we sat down, so everyone's heated, we have our petitions, we have our shirts, we're ready. We're looking for the microphone. Where are we speaking? Okay. And from the second that we sat down, they were deploying tactics to diffuse everyone, the whole situation. So from our power, stupid PowerPoint like we're five years old.
Yeah.
Guiding principles, the gri, the guiding principles that were going off. And guys, listen, we're being very transparent, but you aren't being transparent.
No.
Because the people that are really making the decisions are at home hiding while the people that they paid to take the shit are in front of us.
Yes.
Then after that, they disperse everybody into little groups by maps.
Yeah.
So from the second we sat down, they were doing, and you could see it happening. If you're not an idiot, you can literally see them just using every
Bullshit tactic in the, in the book to get you
To get you to calm down, shut up and
And just take it.
Just take it.
Just take it.
Just take it.
Yeah. Hey, we're making our decisions and that's fucking great. And, uh, you guys can live with it.
Totally transparent, guys. We're up to, go to the survey.
Yeah.
Go to the survey. So what he tried to do when we first walked up.
Tried to send us to a survey.
So we were like, just talking to him, showing the map. I was just showing him like what makes sense for this school to go here and us to go there and blah, blah, blah. And he was like, well, I invite you guys to go online and go to the survey. And he quickly realized that that was not gonna work.
No, I got right in front of that motherfucker's face.
And I said, is that what you're gonna, I said, are you just gonna answer everything with survey or are we gonna actually have a conversation? No, well, you know, well, blah, blah. So
Yeah. Uh, so I got in his face and I said, hey, man, here's the fucking sitch. Uh, we're, we're actually gonna have a conversation about this. We're gonna talk about this. And I'm gonna address the problems of what this is. Cause you hired somebody from outside of our state to redistrict schools in a tiny town.
It was him that they hired. So he has no, okay, okay.
That's what I'm saying. Um, cause you know, when they came in, introduced him, it was the head of the school board.
Yeah.
Uh, this fucking guy, uh, David Hortman.
He was fairly nice, but he's a little fucking weasely, weak piece of shit.
There and on our, on our way.
But he was also lying and he was also being, you know, it's just shady. Like why, why can't you, why can't you just sit there and let us talk?
And they, so they didn't let any of the moms talk and it was pure chaos at the end. And I said, you know what, man? Uh, I get about six point one million listeners on Drinking Bros, one point eight on here. And I was like, you can shut these moms up tonight, but you're not gonna shut this down. So we're gonna fucking rage against you and you'll, you'll find out what it's like. And he kinda gave me like a smirk of like, huh, huh, really?
Okay, go to the survey. I went to the survey.
Understand, by the way, the power of a podcast and what it is. They think if you're not on the radio, like a local station, it's like, look, motherfucker, if I was on a local station, I'd be lucky to get thirty thousand listeners, right? Now we're close to eight million. And today, uh, he felt the first six point one million call him, um, Matthew Cropper, G I S. Uh, he's already deleted his Facebook page and it is not even new. Um, next is the Instagrams. We're working on that.
Is this, what do you reckon? Does this work or does this just get our
Look, ours, we, we moved to a specific neighborhood.
Tell
We moved to a specific neighborhood that was close to an elementary school and a middle school. It's one point six miles out of the back. Take a left, elementary school. One point eight, take a right out of the back, that's the middle school. You, there's nowhere else for us to go.
Where did, what did we tell the listeners to say? Just call him?
Call him. And I said, free, uh, look, I said, Freemasonboro Forest is what I said. Um, and, uh, I've gotten, fuck, hundreds of messages already saying, I think this guy has blocked me already. Like this is getting crazy.
I got one message that was like, I'm sixty-nine percent sure that he disconnected his phone. I like the sixty-nine percent as well. Cause it's a high number, but it's a great number.
It's a great number. And, uh, we appreciate that. Um, so, uh, today, talk about the others. Talk about the others on this board.
Okay.
Um, because this is, if he's gonna, uh, cause this is my guess now at this point, right? You hire an outside party to come into a town they've never, never been to, never lived in. And, and they, and he said it, that David Hortman guy said it, you know? And he said, oh, this guy's never even been here. Never even seen the city. That way the, the opinion is totally unbiased. And I was like, no, it's uninformed and uneducated.
Yeah, exactly.
So don't fucking pass the buck.
Saying to him like certain things about where there's a light for a certain subdivision to go to the school that they're sending us, it would be easier for them to go than it would for us to go. He didn't know what I was talking about.
Didn't, he doesn't know anything.
He's not from here. So when I say this person can go at the light, this whole group, sixty-five kids can do that.
Yeah.
He was just like, uh, I don't know. I'm gonna have to look into that. But everyone on the board knows that.
It's just, he's a talking head with a fucking cheap presentation. And that's all it was, is a diversion tactic of what the real issue is. All of these people are running for reelection next year. This redistricting is happening and they don't wanna get voted out of their positions. And what I said on Drinking Bros, I'm gonna say it today. If this goes down and you redistrict a school that is again, one point six and one point eight miles from my house, from where I fucking live, there's nowhere else like but to hike up somewhere else, right?
It'll take us a half an hour to get to the other school.
Yeah, and, and for both ways, that's gonna add an hour, an extra hour to my day and, and your day. We shoot this show.
And more importantly, the kids' day on the bus.
The kids.
When they're taking the bus home, I don't want him on there for fucking half an hour.
At a, at a, at a road where there's no traffic lights or any of that stuff. And here's the thing, it's, it's a small town. Again, two hundred fifty thousand people live, live in this town. There wasn't any new schools built, right? Or it's not like it was a busing situation of like, hey, man, we're trying to, you know, blend in other communities and all that other shit. It's not that. It's not that either. Um, they're just kinda mixing around kids. Uh, and it, and it all seems very fucking suspect to me. Um, David's got two kids, he said.
Okay.
So
David is?
Uh, Hortman, he was the guy that we talked to.
Okay. That told us, okay.
Yeah. So, uh, he's got two kids. I guarantee fucking to you, he got exactly the school district that is close enough to his house.
Hmm.
Uh, that, that where his kids will go will be right by his fucking house. Um, will they though, is the question. Because if this goes down, and I, and I said this on Drinking Bros and I mean this, I will fucking run against you next year on, for the Board of Education and take your goddamn job. So if this is your second income or whatever it is to you, um, it's going to be mine. And I'm gonna take this away from you. Cause you fucking cocksuckers gave us no option, no nothing. And to pull kids away from schools that they're already in from, again, one point six miles away. Christ, I could see if we were living in the big city, you know, if we were in Atlanta or shit, because this happened to me in Atlanta. Um, and I told the audience this. I, I got redistrict when I was in fourth grade. Uh, it was far. Ended up on a fucking bus, uh, forever. And I got split up from all my friends. So all the friends that I had from, you know, kindergarten through fourth were gone. And the weird thing is, is, uh, I didn't get to see them until high school. And it was, it was like Lost. It was like the plane showing back up on Lost where you're like, oh, fuck, are we back on the island or? Cause this, this is real weird. Like everybody grew up. Um, and it was a strange transition, uh, for, for me. Like, I was just like, ah, shit. I gotta remake friends with kids that I used to know, but everybody's got now, they're new friends. And you're kinda like, where do I fit in, right? When you go back to high school. And that's, that's what happened to me. So, um, if this happens and, and more importantly, if they don't let you guys speak in a public forum.
That's the thing with us is we're not going to die if it doesn't happen. But we just wanted to be able to, the opportunity to fight, um, as it should be, right? To just fight in the democracy, the way that we want to be able to, like showing, you know, they always say like, show up. Local government's the most important thing. Show up to your town halls, show up to your committee meetings. Well, we're showing up.
Yep.
To everyone at this point.
And you're shutting all of us down.
Wanting to talk. We just want one of them, even if we all fucking yell at you, you're gonna have to take it.
That's your job.
That's your job. And that's what you signed up for. So if you're gonna do something like this, you know, that's just how it goes.
I mean, uh
The only thing is like, yeah, are we gonna die? No. Is it a horrible school? No.
No.
It's just, you know, it's just, we need to be able to have a voice for, even if it's just one night. And even if you don't fucking even do anything about it.
And it's just
That's all we need, though.
It's not the safest route for the children. Cause it, look, the, the school that they are trying to redistrict us to, um, isn't bad at all. And the teachers are nice and all that other shit.
No, it's great.
But it's just the safety of the kids trying to get there and then the parents in traffic and what that's gonna create for the town. This is what happens when you have a guy come in and, and who doesn't know anything about the fucking traffic patterns or about the town and all that other shit. Um, but, uh, if he disconnected his phone, I know he dis, I know he deleted his Facebook. Uh, he's still up on Instagram. I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a personal message on there. Um, see what happens. I have a feeling that's gonna be, uh, private as well coming up. Uh, and again, again, Matthew, thanks for that fucking smirk, brother. Uh, you encouraged people to call.
He did say I encourage. I encourage.
It. I said, great.
Said, do you want us to call you?
Away with a little smirk and I was like
And he said, this fucker.
Yeah. Cool, man.
Shit.
So we, we called, um, you've deleted your phone number. We'll find others. Um, so uh, I'm, I'm completely fine with it, but to, uh, cause there's a woman named Lisa Estep, she's on there, David Hortman, Stephanie Adams, Nelson Bolleau, that guy, remember that, that guy?
Baldi?
Yeah. Uh, Judy Justice, uh, Jeanette Nichols, and then, uh, Bill Riven Bark. Uh, and there's an email here for all of the Board of Education members. And that is, uh, boardmembersemail@n h c s dot net. The hilarious thing about this on their website is they are only offering you a fax number.
Oh, yes.
A fucking fax number.
But feel free.
But feel free. You know what's weird?
Contact us.
Yesterday, they had a number on there. That is now missing. There is only a fax number.
Oh, no.
So if you wanna fax them something, eh, let's say you have a fax machine at work.
Sure.
You wanna fax them Freemasonboro Forest.
Yeah.
Eh, just write it down, fax them at nine one oh, two five four, four three five zero. Imagine if they got a bunch of faxes. Oh my God, it'd be great. Nine one oh, two five four, four three, five oh is the fax number. Um, and then there's another meeting like on October first, which, you know, it's a town meeting. So everybody from the town is allowed to be there. Obviously, I'll be there.
Obviously.
Can't wait to see them, all of them.
Well, October first?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, so we, look, whether they like it or not.
We're coming for you.
And the speech is happening, so.
Yeah, it's either gonna happen with or without a forum.
Yep.
But it's happening.
Your call. Either way.
Kick me out.
Either way.
Yeah.
Uh, so we'll see how that all shakes out. But, uh, you know, in case, uh, Matthew Cropper plugs back into that number, maybe turn it off for the day, right?
Maybe just for the day, you thought, let me just
Let me just turn this off for the day.
A little cooling off period.
You can, uh, you can hit him back, uh, via phone at six one four four five one, one two four two. He encouraged it.
Back on, he encouraged.
He encouraged it. So if he turns it back on, it's six one four, four, five one, one two, four two. Uh, that is Matthew Cropper at G I S. And, uh, give him a little jangle.
Yeah.
Say what's up. Freemasonboro Forest, you fucking cock. So the meeting did not go as planned. I know we've been talking about this for weeks. Flew back, uh, from the, the cruise super early, uh, after the Drinking Bros cruise, which was
I was still on the boat in the meeting.
You were still on the boat and these, you guys had t-shirts made and everything else. And it's like, man, you moms work hard as, as, as hell, uh, across the board. And, uh, you all deserve to be heard from whatever neighborhood you're in. And, um, let's face it, uh, most of us dads have to work. Uh, you work. Do the show in the morning. Um, take, I, I usually take our kids to school. Um, then you prep for the show. I come in afterwards, we do the show. You go home and then I come home at, you know, six-thirty at night or whatever, like adding more time to your day for all of this shit. It's crazy. Um, again, for schools that are one point six miles away, like I, I could see if we were splitting hairs over like ten miles, twenty miles, something like that, like fuck you, dude.
Just move everybody north. That's all.
That's it. Um, they didn't put people south of us at, at our school. And it's just like, man, I'm gonna, I have to drive past this school to get to the fucking new one? Like, in what world is that happening? So, uh, we're, it's, the reckoning is coming. I can promise you that. Cause again, I'll run for your, I'll just run for your job. I will run for your fucking jobs, uh, next year at the election. The one that you tried to dodge this year by hiring somebody outside of the state. I will run for your fucking jobs. Um, alright, rant over. Uh, let's get to the sponsors, shall we, Jabs?
Ooh, okay.
Yeah. Talking about ghostbed.com forward slash Drinking Bros. It's a mattress. And I bet you none of those motherfuckers on the school board sleep on this mattress. You know, they'd have a better attitude with life if they did. Uh, Ghostbed is the finest sleep you'll ever have in the land. The ghost pillows will make you wake up like an angel. Um, but, uh, yeah, fucking, maybe we should get the goddamn Board of Education some beds.
There you go.
There we go.
If you guys do the right thing, maybe we will.
Their thinking would have been better on this whole entire process.
To approach it.
That's what happens when you don't sleep well.
You new beds.
Give you new beds from ghostbed.com forward slash Drinking Bros. If you're military or first responder, bottom of the page, you'll see a nice, nice little tab that you can get an extra fifteen percent off. It's amazing. Uh, as always at ghostbed.com forward slash Drinking Bros. They've got a page to go program, thirty-six months, no interest. No one on the internet is doing that. Jabs. Best in the business at ghostbed.com forward slash Drinking Bros. Next up, we get StrikeForceEnergy.com.
Boom, 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 shablinkers.
Hmm. Strike Force. I'm having some now. Sorry.
Cruisin', cruisin'.
Ugh, having some now. Wanna apologize, I don't have the new, uh, boxes up yet. They sent me some new boxes.
Oh.
Dude, they keep
Oh, yes.
They, they're exploding. I can just, I'm gonna be honest, they're in like, what, I think fourteen hundred seven elevens now? Um, and everybody's just like, dude, they're in like stores and all that shit. I was like, look, man, we've been with these guys for years to this point.
Yeah.
And I'm like, yeah, it's, it's the, it's the best energy drink you can possibly get, for real. If you don't wanna lug around, you know, a bunch of shit. Uh, they got four amazing flavors, grape, original, lemon and orange. Uh, ten pack, forty pack, seven fifty milliliter bottle that rests on your bar top or countertop. And you can just boom, boom. Pop a couple squirts in and go. Go to StrikeForceEnergy.com, use promo code REVOLUTION for twenty percent off. Last but not least, Jabs, this is what they came for. Especially Gordon Wagner.
Oh, is he back?
He's always, he's never left.
Okay, 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 okay.
He's never left.
Well, you Reich it has not been really the Instagram.
Oh, oh, not going? I don't know who runs that.
I know, we neither, but anyway.
Yeah. It's gotta be tough that we do so many shows.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, but what are we talking about?
Talking about straight razors that come.
Oh, that's a clean cut smooth. Oh, you're right.
Ah, there it is. There it is.
There it is.
Shaving products for dudes and, and, uh, ladies of all ages. Would you ever, would you ever shave your legs with a straight razor? It'd probably be too much, right?
It's too much.
Yeah, I figured.
Too much, too scary, too many.
For dudes.
Yeah, it's for dudes. I would use maybe the safety razor.
Hmm.
But gosh, there is nothing like a new, super sharp razor.
Um, they got a nice safety razor. What do you, what do you got up there, Jamie?
Uh, they wanna send emails directly to the person's fax machine?
No way. So our, our producer, Jamie, just popped in and said, hey, if you wanna send emails via fax, you can just go to faxzero.com and then just email to, for a free fax. That's fucking awesome. Hold that up one more time. Faxzero.com, email to fax for free.
Zero Z E R O, you're spelling it out, so faxzero.com.
You can email.
To a fax machine.
For free, that's. Great. That's amazing. Uh, let's give out that fax number one more time, then. You send in a free fucking email. Nine one zero two five four four three five oh, nine one zero two five four four three five oh. Just fax in Freemason Borough Forest. Um, it's free at faxzero.com. Tell you what, man. They're not a sponsor, but they are now.
Faxzero.
You're welcome, Faxzero. Uh, that's a freezies, cause if that works. Come on, brother, come on.
Come on.
Straight razors. Promo code revolution, twenty percent off, I forgot to say it, I got a little, little sidetracked, I got a little, I got a little wood in my pants. To be real, this is with you, Jamie, I appreciate that. I appreciate that. Um, I don't know how long you're gonna get away with you Reich anymore. They're coming for everybody now.
Oh, who, what, who else?
Did you see Trudeau? The, uh, Prime Minister of Canada?
Uh huh.
Is it? That, that's what you call those, those people in Canada, right? They're prime ministers?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, it should be president, I think. President, it sounds more official. Prime Minister kinda leaves the options open of like, do you, are you the most powerful guys or somebody else?
Right.
Cause like, the Prime Minister of England has a different job than, you know, like, when I hear like, the Queen of England, I'm like, oh, well, I'm, I'd rather go to the Queen. I don't wanna go to you.
To the Prime Minister.
To the Prime Minister, I'd rather talk to the Queen. Again, not from these countries, don't live in these lands.
Not really, but yeah.
And I wouldn't make decisions for them like Matthew Cropper is making for us, because I don't live there, you fuck. Um, Justin Trudeau.
Okay.
Uh, Prime Minister of Canada, uh, got popped for, uh, blackface in two thousand and one. They've got this picture circulating. Uh, it was in a yearbook, so I don't know what, what took them all this long to find it. Uh, here, here's the thing. I'm gonna, before you say anything, it, it was a costume party, he was going as Aladdin, so they're calling it brown face. Because he was making himself, uh, brown for this fucking thing. Um, again, he was at a party twenty years ago as Aladdin, you know, uh, you used to be able to do shit like that, but it was just like, hey, man, fuck off, even ten years ago.
Well, my point with it is, and the other guy, the Virginia guy, was in the yearbook as well.
Correct.
So it's, that right there tells you that it wasn't that big of a deal back then if they put it in a yearbook. It's not like it was, do you know what I mean? Some weird, like, somebody was taking a cellphone footage and nobody knew about it. The school put that picture in, the people that are running the yearbook committee put that picture in, the people, like.
And there's like nine girls in the photo with him that are taking pictures and shit.
Everyone at that point would have to be held responsible.
Accountable and like, hey, well, you know, what are you gonna, you start, look, they're gonna dig up everything on everyone. We talked about that, that kid from SNL. That poor fucking bastard.
Um, yeah, but again, but we also said he's better off, it's fine.
Yeah, but then, you know, this, it's like, hey, man, you, you're just gonna dig up everything on everyone through the end of time. And apparently, no one has made mistakes in this world, so, um, you know, and even if you had, well, you can't correct them.
Yeah.
Um, I, when I saw this, I was like, motherfucker, man, they're just, they're coming after everybody now. Doesn't matter. It just doesn't matter anymore. Um, I'm, I'm, again, I'm looking at the, the cost, it is, it's Aladdin, he's at a costume party, like, Jesus, man.
Yeah.
You know?
And look, we're trying, we're doing, we're trying to do better.
Everybody's trying to do better, I guess, but like, if you're offended at every single last goddamn thing, it's like, it's like the movie White Chicks, right? There was no offense over that. Nobody gave a shit. No white people gave a shit.
But my thing is if he was doing it at a party last week.
Right.
Or at a party last month, or even last year, it's like, okay, dude, like, you know better now.
Yeah.
Um, so the, for me, and that's with the Me Too, that's with everything, the retroactive uh, persecution, right?
Yeah.
Where it's just like, you can't, we can't really do that, yet there's people in many people in prison for weed offenses. We're not like jumping to let them out, right? But we are gonna let, we are gonna go back and make sure that the people that did blackface twenty years ago are persecuted, right?
Yeah, 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 so.
I, I'm not really sure.
He had to apologize and all that other shit. Uh, I don't know this fucking dude, I don't live in this country. Um, but, uh, look, just if you're out in the world, they're going to find everything at this point.
Yeah.
So I'm sure you'll be crushed one day for you Reich it.
Um, but I will go the way of, I mean, like Shane Gillis even.
Yeah.
Didn't really apologize.
I'm not gonna apologize for shit.
And I wouldn't either. It would be like, I am happy, like he was saying, I am happy to have a conversation with anyone that I actually offended. Actually offended.
Yeah.
The person that really took, took offense to it, I would love to have a conversation with them.
Yeah.
But, um, other people that are just trying to like, take you down for weird shit.
Piggyback off this shit, it's like, hey, man, uh, I'm all done with that. I'm all done with that. I, like, look, I've done some aggressive films. Said this before and I'll say it again.
Sure.
Guarantee you, in two, three years tops, they'll be pulling clips from those going, oh my god, I can't believe what you do. No, that's comedy, motherfucker. And that's what I did. Uh, those movies are all available in every platform and have been for years. So you can give a, you can give a, I don't care. Um, I'm done with caring. What I, what, what I do care about, though, is you know me. You've known me well. Uh, you've known me for years now at this point, Jabs.
I guess so.
And you know that two things bother me, two types of people who die really get to me. You wanna guess what they are?
Porn stars and supermodels.
Correct. Porn stars and supermodels. August.
August.
Remember when August Ames died?
August Ames, you guys check out that podcast yet?
Yeah, 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 go back in the archives. Uh, August. Um, doesn't deserve, didn't deserve it. Oh, why?
Why?
Uh, supermodels and porn stars, when they die, uh, now that, that I really care about, uh, we, we get a, we had a big one pass. Last night, and, uh, ooh, man, this one hurts. This one hurts. Jessica James. You know?
Jessica James.
Super famous, super fucking famous porn star.
Oh, okay.
Um, she's got around a million Instagram followers, too, at this point. Um, yeah, pull her up, Jessica James, you'll know exactly who it is. Uh, they found her dead yesterday, um, at her place in, uh, in Hollywood. The, the cause of death is unknown, um, but we're, cops reportedly found various prescription drugs. And, uh, she did have a history of seizures, so.
Okay.
Not sure if, if it was that, but, uh, she was living in San Fernando Valley, which wasn't a shock.
Sure, yeah.
Obviously. Um, not a shock that she was living in the valley. Big, big porn world, right?
Hmm, what was her specialty, do you know?
No, but she'd been on all the shows, you know, like Celebrity Rehab and, uh, like she made the run on VH1. Um, super fucking famous, and, you know, she's been doing, uh, private gigs online now, which I, I think everybody's moved to that in the porn world.
Yeah.
To, for money, um, but we're gonna go through her entire history, cause you know, we do this. When a porn star dies, we go through their life and we give them the tribute that they deserve, Jesse. Um, at twenty-six, she started doing soft porn.
Alright.
And, uh.
Well, sure, okay, she was born Jessica Redding.
Hmm.
In Anchorage.
Ah, Alaska.
Really hot people come from Al- uh, Alaska. It's crazy. It's something about the, the cold, like preserves. I mean, they all have just like great skin, gorgeous.
Yeah.
Guys and girls.
It's the snow. You're always so cold, your face is tight.
I don't know what it is.
Your, your, your skin is tighter.
Yeah.
Cause you're cold, cold all the time.
It's just, yeah.
Now, her first smash hit.
Mm hmm.
And this was, this was went global, um, was the two thousand and five porn, uh, The Porn Identity. You remember that one?
The Porn Identity? No.
Correct, correct. Um, it was a takeoff, Jabs, on The Bourne Identity.
I get that.
And, uh, she did The Porn Identity.
I get that.
With that, so, um, that was a big one for a lot of people, and I think even Matt Damon wrote, um, a review on it and just said, I've never seen pornography this powerful, along with acting and action and love. I, I think he said love, there was some love in there. Um, she was named Honey of the Year by Hustler in the same year.
Whoa.
It's a pretty, it was a pretty esteemed award right there, right? Um, I don't know who's gonna, I don't know where she, her estate is, or who's gonna get that award.
Weeds as herself, huh?
Correct. Yeah, she was on weeds.
Appeared as herself on several episodes of the Showtime series Weeds.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Two hundred adult films.
Two hundred, I mean, it was a lot, like, she's, again, super famous in the porn world. Uh, tributes have flooded in from fellow members of the industry who remembered her as sweet and electric.
Savory, yeah.
One of the, the quotes in here that they got from somebody was, uh, Jaclyn Taylor, who's been on Drinking Bros.
Oh, yeah.
Um, she said, you were so kind and so generous, I'll never forget you coming to take care of me after my rhinoplasty. You always had a way of making.
Job, yep.
You always had a way of making people laugh. Sorry, I'm getting choked up.
Yeah.
And, uh, your energy was electric. Oh, that feels good to get out. Feels good to get out.
So one of her last Instagram posts, it looks like, hey, guys, took a little vacation for a couple of days, I love you all, apologies, I hope everyone is having the best sex time of their life.
Yeah. See that? Always, always thinking of others all the way.
Heart emoji, heart emoji, heart emoji.
Through the very end.
Heart emoji.
Okay, so there was, there was more.
More after that one.
Okay, do you wanna say this?
There was, the total of.
The heart emojis?
Yep.
You're counting that right now?
There's nine.
Oh, there's nine?
Hmm.
Oof, that's lots, that's a lot of heart emojis.
Well, she just really, really, really hopes that you're having the best sex time of your life.
Yeah.
I'm having.
Yeah, that's nice.
Sex time of your life.
My, my thing, like Jaclyn Taylor is hilarious, um, again, she was on Drinking Bros before. Was it necessary, Jaclyn, to put in, thank you for getting me after my rhinoplasty, like my nose job? Like, why, you, you just could have said for taking care of me when I was sick, or.
Oh, that's funny, what if it's like, well, I wanna thank her. For taking care of me after I lost all that weight. After I lost all that weight and got the boob job and was looking, and, and was tan.
Oh, man.
Thank you for picking me up after I lost all the weight, got a boob job, and was tanned as shit.
It's just so specific, isn't it? My, say, thank you for taking care of, care of me after my rhinoplasty. Ah, does it get any better than that?
Not really. Do you know that I'm still on the boat?
Hmm?
I'm still on the boat.
Are you still, you're, you're still rocking back and forth?
I feel like there might be something wrong with me.
Come on. You think so?
Dude, how, how, yeah, like, how am I still, like, seriously moving like, like we're on a boat?
So let me ask you this, cause we have a flight tonight.
Yeah, dude, I'm, I'm just gonna have to drama me and back up again.
Oof, Jabs.
What am I gonna do? Can you guys please message me or something, like what you have to do for?
It, so.
Like, if, if something's triggered and I now have just vertigo all the fucking time, like, I would die.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's a rough one.
There's some kind of weird surgery, some inner ear fucking shit, some like, I just don't ever want to be sick like this.
Yeah, that's great, it's, it's, look, so is a boat out now, by the way? It has to be.
Is the what?
Is a boat out, getting a boat out, that's, that has to be out of the picture now.
No, because when we go with our friends and stuff, I don't get sick at all.
But that, you have not gone when it's choppy like that.
Yeah, I've been on, yeah, I've gone a lot more than you have, actually. You've gone out like one time with our friends.
With our friends, but in real life, like, I've gone deep sea fishing numerous times.
Yeah, so you said, I'm sure you went like one time, like two times or something.
Jesse, I'm fucking registered, um, with states for all of, of big game fishing and all that stuff. No, I.
I know you went like one time or something, which is fine.
In all honesty, I've probably been like twenty or thirty times, right? Um, that's serious.
Where?
Uh, a lot in LA. Um, I had some relatives that lived in LA, San Francisco. Um, and then New Jersey, we went a lot, cause I spent most of my summers there.
Yeah, so like, it's fine when we just go to like Mesa Borough Island and back, like, I don't get sick at all.
And I even went, uh, in Oai one time, um, and that was nice.
Cool.
That was fun time.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
So, um.
So I've been a lot, Jabs, I've been a lot.
No, that's cool.
But I think if you were on it, you know, on a regular basis, like, ooh, I don't know. I don't know, cause maybe you got triggered. Maybe it was something within you that is now out in the world and you can't stop it.
No, I think it's an inner ear thing, but yeah.
You think so?
Yeah, that's how it works.
Eh, does it?
Yeah, so.
I'm not a urologist.
To someone, yeah, I'll talk to someone else that kinda like knows about it, and then we'll see what's going on.
Yeah, you circle back with me, uh, let me know.
Yeah, I'll definitely talk to anyone else that understands, understands it.
Oh, the world, yeah, yeah, of course, of course. Yeah, uh, I think I got everything under control on this one, um, again.
So, yeah, uh.
I'm no urologist.
Worried, worried.
Uh, next up, Jabs, uh, fucking, they keep saying this Warren Rising, man.
The what?
Warren Rising, uh, Elizabeth Warren.
Oh, Warren Rising.
Yeah, it's one of the top stories today, dude. Uh, now they're, they're asking the question. Um, in every news outlet today, is it her nomination to lose, um, because looking at her crowds and the momentum versus everyone else on that side of the, the boat, uh, democratic wise, is it hers to lose? That would be insane to me. I didn't see Biden going down, to be honest with you.
You what, you didn't?
Uh-uh. I didn't see that happening.
Yeah.
And I don't know, again, with, with the press, you never know if this shit is real or not, or if they're pushing their own people or why. Um, but with Biden, man, I just thought he was kinda tough on, but he keeps, he keeps kinda stumbling in all this shit, and, uh, uh, I don't know. I don't know anymore. I, I, I would have put money on Biden, and on our sports show, we're, uh, we're at mybookie.com and promo code Drinking Bros, if you wanna use that to double your deposits, we did bet on the election. So we've already bet on the twenty twenty election, my co-host and I, right? But on the Democratic side, the odds were so shitty for everyone else besides Biden, then it was like, eh, we throw some money on this or not? Uh, I, I, I don't know. I'm, I'm actually really surprised by this. Do, do you believe that she could beat Trump?
Warren? No.
I don't either, right?
No. Um, I would think it was Bernie and Bernie and Trump.
Hmm.
I, I don't see Warren getting past Bernie.
Maybe, but they're, they're so similar. It depends, like, did he lose all of that momentum in the last election? Cause he, look.
I don't think they're as similar as, as, yeah.
Their, their views are very similar.
Very similar, but he, yeah, he's got, he's a little bit more grounded in some of his executions.
And, and she's not, is what you're saying?
No, she's a little bit like, just, you know what I mean? Like, I will fight for you, blah, 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 like, things that will never, ever work, whereas, and again, maybe it's only cause he was on Rogan and I got to actually hear his exact implementation.
Without screaming?
Without screaming and without being cut off and without having to like rile the crowd up, it really just was a conversation of how he would go about doing all of these crazy things that sound crazy when they're being yelled at you.
Sure.
So maybe if she went on, I would have a different view, but it, uh, I don't know how she's going to uh, execute any of these crazy things that she wants to do. So I would think at this point with Rogan and shit, like, that Bernie would be a frontrunner.
I don't know. Um, I, I.
So the polls are putting her what?
They're putting her ahead, so like, uh, the new polls from, uh, NBC News and Wall Street Journal.
Um, but as we know, those are not right. So it's like, did you learn anything, you guys?
I'm not sure.
From two thousand and six, do you know what I mean?
I'm not sure.
Did you learn anything? You don't put out these, these weird percentages that make people go, oh, okay, we're good.
So.
We're good, and then they don't grow up and vote.
I don't know, I, if you would have asked me this, not one prayer, I thought it would have been Bernie against Biden.
William.
And that's it.
Wilson.
Uh, met Willie Imson, she didn't get to go do the.
Debate?
No.
Ah, she's out.
We were on the, we were on the, on the cruise, we didn't get to see it. Um, so we were performing for the people and doing live shows.
Doing live shows and getting vertigo for life.
We missed, we missed the, uh, debate, but, man. Uh, I would have loved to have seen Marianne Williamson in that fucking thing. That would have been amazing.
Amazing. Oh, gosh, no, but she didn't realize how mean the left was. So maybe she's just done, because at that point, if you're talking shit about the left like that.
Yeah.
You're done, right?
Oh, yeah.
Cause that's your mean. I did not realize. How mean, it's crazy, she said on this, on this show. I forget what it was, or she was speaking at something, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Crazy, she's just like head in her hand.
Every time.
They're so mean.
Every time, we got breaking news here. Uh, this is not what you wanna hear, but the people need to hear it, Jabs. Delta, a flight from Atlanta just plunged nearly thirty thousand feet on its way to Fort Lauderdale, and it had to, uh, make an emergency landing in Tampa. Whew, that is a.
God.
That's a big drop. That is a real big drop, Jabs.
I'm just like picturing that, no yelling, that's why.
The pilots deployed oxygen mask for the passengers and, uh.
Oh, my god, that's it, heart attack.
And then made the controlled descent.
Heart attack and I'm dead. Heart attack and I'm dead.
Shit. That is fucking crazy. Thirty thousand feet?
What happened? Did they say what happened?
Um, it was some pressurization issue. My God, man, that is crazy.
When are we getting on the flight? Two hours? That's what?
Yeah, it's cruising, it's usually cruising altitude, right? That's what our producer Jamie was chiming in. Usually it's, hey.
No, they dropped thirty thousand.
Yeah, they dropped, but that, that's usually like, hey, man, you're fucking dead. Yeah. So, man, that's close. Um, but, you know, people are like, dude, life is fragile like that, uh, like getting on in this. So the, the total of it, by the way, this is according to the passengers that are getting off right now. They're saying it was a scary sixty to ninety seconds. We didn't know what was going on and, um, ooh. Could you imagine a ninety, ninety seconds is a long time. So sixty, if you really break it down.
Oh, my God. To, no.
To drop like that?
No. No.
Man, that is nuts, dude.
I think I would be dead. I think I would have a heart attack and I would die.
We'll fly in five hours, so, sure, we'll be fine, Japes, you know? Even talking about vertigo, you'd have.
I'd be, I'd have a heart attack and die. What are you talking about?
And you'd probably lose an eye too.
Is that what happens?
I think an eyeball pops out of your skull.
Yeah, yeah, with that pressure drop.
With the pressure drop and then with the other stuff that you have, I think, uh, you're, probably your right eye will just shoot out.
Sure.
Into the backseat of the thing.
I've got a podcast for you.
You do?
On Podcast Corner. Let's do Podcast Corner.
Let's do it. What's that?
So it's called Long May They Run, which is a fucking great name for a podcast, right? A music doc podcast, so they're gonna go, long may they run?
That's really hard. Long may they run?
Yeah, like, long may you run.
Yeah, but why don't, why, why isn't it long may you run?
Cause they're going into different bands, so they're gonna do each season is going into a different band and doing their whole, like, documentary. The first one is Fish.
Is it really?
Yeah.
That's funny.
Origins.
That's a good one.
The whole deal.
Um.
Long May They Run is a fucking great name for a podcast. Great name.
They could, they could have done better, but, uh, Long May They Run, good luck remembering that one. That's, it just sounds like a bunch of adjectives put together, where you're just like, oh, long may they run.
Long, dude.
Long may they run.
It's a song, that everyone knows.
It's verbs and adjectives. No, it's long may you run. So.
Yeah.
Japes, uh, look, they could have done, could have done a little better with that, but I'm down for that. You know I love rock docs and you know I love all of that shit on musicians. Fish has got a crazy story, Japes. A really crazy story. Not a way they're following.
It's like, yeah.
But I think it was the drummer, and I'm gonna have to look this up real quick. I think the, like, the drummer, somebody got popped for like child porn? Like, something weird like that, where it was just like, huh? Fish? Um, who, who else is out today? Say, who the upcoming seasons are?
First season.
It is. So, did they say, hey, did they cock tease it out for the, the next one?
No.
All right. So just, it could be just Fish then. Is it doing well in the ratings?
Yeah.
What number is it?
Um, I think overall it was like at twelve or thirteen.
No shit?
Yeah.
Overall?
Overall charts, yeah.
God damn it, man. I gotta, I, I, man, I gotta start keeping up with this. I gotta start keeping up with other shows. You're good at it. You're great at it. You listen to everything that comes out. Um, I'll look at the charts, because I'm looking at ratings every day, but we do seven a week. And then I, I usually have to edit it and put it up and all that shit, right? Uh, and write the description, so I don't get a, a chance to listen like you do. Uh, but I did see the number one the other day was The Office Girls. Did you listen to that one?
I didn't listen to it.
Oh, you didn't?
Mm-mm.
It's, uh, Pam and Angela?
Yeah.
It's the two of them, so they're hosting a show, yeah, about the office. And it's number one. It wasn't, here's the weird thing to me. It wasn't surprising to see that they were number one. People love the office more than life itself.
Yeah, but, ah, well, I would say, how could that sustain? But Ron Burgundy has been up there. So usually what happens, if you watch the charts, is like a YouTube star will start one and be like number one. Because they have millions of followers on YouTube, right? But they cannot sustain it because they're not podcasts, like, they're just not good at doing podcasts, right?
Hmm.
So they will slowly fall and then be off the charts.
Gotcha.
So Ron Burgundy has held, where I was just like, that's a fluke because it is who it is.
Hmm.
Conan has dropped, uh, you know, like, there's these other YouTube stars, Zayn, whatever, is up there right now. But that won't last, because he's not, they're, they just aren't. That format, so. Here's the difference, is like YouTube stars are like, hey, guys, what's up? I'm so excited. Everything's awesome and nothing's bad.
Right.
And podcasts, you have to be like, I have vertigo, I'm dying. How about you?
We hate the school board, yeah.
We hate the school board. This is what's going on in our life. This is a real conversation between two people that isn't like faked and hyped up and like, kay, guys. So it just doesn't translate.
Got it.
But they can get on the chart because they fucking have a bunch of followers and they're like, what? Like, it's hard?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Is it hard to do a podcast? I mean, I'm already number one. It's like, yeah, stay there.
Stay there, yeah.
Try and stay there.
And do it for years. Um, by the way, I wanna, I'm gonna back, backtrack to that fish. It was the bassist, um, who was charged with, uh.
Well, I'm sure they'll go into that.
You, you, listen to the story. This is why I remember it, because it was fucking crazy. Cause I was like, man, was it child porn? It had something to do with, like, a child. A really young child. And I was like, what the fuck? Um, he was, it was, uh, the bassist, Mike Gordon, um, was, was on charges of child endangerment. He was found alone in a boathouse with a nine-year-old girl and, um, it gets weirder. You ready?
Maybe.
Gordon allegedly met the girl and her father backstage at a Grateful Dead show in Jones Beach, New York. Her father is a leader of the Hells Angels chapter. One would think he would be dead.
Right.
So I don't know what the outcome of that was, but though, I'm sure they'll go through it. Um, you know?
Yeah, I hope.
Uh, cause Fish, man, shit. I, look, I've seen them, I don't know, probably fifteen, twenty times. I don't listen to them in cars. I think I've talked about this before. I'm not a, like, I'm not gonna jam out to Fish in the car, but I'll definitely go to a show, because it's a blast, just the whole experience of it. Um, but, uh, yeah, they got these, those little cheeseburgers they throw out in the crowd and, I mean, the whole fucking shit, these little blow-up cheeseburgers, like, you could really go into a weird history of why they did it. Cause I, I always figured with them, and I'm probably, I should listen to the goddamn show at this point on the plane. Um, but I, I always figured with them that the Grateful Dead passed away, they had just started, and they felt like they had to pass, that to keep the torch going.
Yeah.
And I felt like that's what it was. Um, but when I'm there at the show, I do enjoy the music, where you're like, huh, all right, cool. Um, I was, I was surprised to learn that you didn't know about G Love and Special Sauce the other day, because they're in town.
Yeah, and all of our friends are going and I don't know who he is.
It could, uh, so here's the other thing. It also could be a regional thing.
Okay.
I felt like, I, I, I'm gonna retract a statement. I, I, I said to you in the car earlier, I was like, it might be an age gap. Um, cause I'm a couple summers older than you. Um, like, just a couple summers.
Five years, yeah.
Two, um, probably, um, again, no, no good at math, but, uh.
Five years older.
Two, probably, probably two. Um, I think it might not be the age thing. I was thinking back on it, and I was like, man, they were huge in the Midwest, huge in the South. It might not, he might not have gone on the West Coast all the way around, so.
I mean, like, I've heard.
Cause you were in LA, you were probably listening to like.
Primus.
Yeah. Were you really?
No.
Oh, I was like, what?
Uh, Portishead, Fiona Apple. Is that around that time?
Yeah. I, look, I, I liked Fiona Apple too, but I guess I ventured out more. Like, I tried to listen to everything musically, because I, I just enjoy music. Um, I just enjoy music. Ah, Beastie Boys is everywhere, but, uh, with them, I don't, maybe not. Cause there wasn't that gigantic hit. And the one that was a gigantic hit to me was probably not to you guys out there. I feel like California was always different in music, where it was just like, hey, man, this is a different vibe out here. Uh, even Atlanta with like OutKast and, uh, you know, Black Crows and Fish and those guys, like, it was, there was a period of time where everybody was at Athens University of Georgia, and they were all playing there, like, R E M came out of there and Widespread Panic and all these guys, and they were like, yeah, this is a fucking scene. And then you, we knew those bands, but other people didn't know those bands and.
Joan Osborne, Lisa Loeb.
Nope. No. What if God was one of us? Is that Joan Osborne?
Yeah.
Does she have more than one song?
Yeah, dude.
Come on.
We've been over this. We've already been over this.
Lisa Loeb, you know, she follows me on Twitter. What up, Lisa Loeb? Still got it, girl? Um, she did the, uh, Reality Bites, remember?
Yes.
We, I think we gave her the, the thing.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, but yeah, so it might have been, now that I think about it, with G Love and Special Sauce, it might just be where you're from.
Yeah.
And it might not have anything to do with.
Widespread either. I had no idea who that was.
I can, I can see that. I can see that, for sure.
Like, everyone, and that was like when we first sort of moved out here and everyone, all of your friends.
Yep.
Were going crazy for it. And I was like.
Look, I'd still love to go to a widespread show.
Yeah.
Um, I enjoyed.
Did not get it.
Yeah, I've seen them a thousand times. I love them. They're great.
Are they like OAR, like?
Yes.
College fans?
So OAR was from Ohio. They used to play at our fraternity. And, uh, I've seen those guys, you know, obviously in my house, um.
Right.
And they're rad too, but you're right, like, OAR is, is a band that I don't feel ever got to the West Coast and blew up, right? It just, we're Midwestern and like, if, if some songs came on, like Crazy Game of Poker, you'd probably know that, but you might not.
Maybe, yeah.
Right?
Right.
Yeah. It's regional shit. And I remember when I first moved out to LA, uh, you know, we got the whole shit. The rental car with the drop top, and it was a Sebring. You know, we got the convertible rental.
Okay.
Car while we were looking for places and all that stuff.
Oh, okay.
Blasting, uh, was it one oh five nine? Yeah, power one oh six. And you were just like, the rap that was coming out of there was just like, oh shit. All right, cool, man. Um, I did not know this, a lot of these groups existed. And I was like, shit, all right. Uh, and then, cause I, I was in New York earlier. I was at NYU, and they had their own set of fucking people, and I was like, all right, sweets. But the big bands, I guess, are, look, they're known everywhere. So like Beastie Boys, I feel like they're always been mega famous and, and stuff like that.
Big Bad Voodoo Daddy.
Nope.
They were, weren't they?
There was a period of time when them, like, right after Swingers came out, and it was them and, uh, Squirrel Nut Zippers. Remember the Squirrel Nut Zippers?
Oh, my gosh, the Squirrel Nut Zippers. I definitely had.
Yeah.
That CD.
Squirrel Nut Zippers, uh, CD. But yeah, there was a.
I cringe.
Right after Swingers came out, everybody was doing that shit.
That's right, that's right, that's right.
Even in, cause I was, yeah, I was in Ohio. Even in Ohio, like, there was like swing nights and all that stuff after that movie came out. I was like, man, I can't believe all of this happened from an independent film.
Oh, yes.
And it did.
Oh, yeah.
It did. Uh, still one of the greatest movies of all time, by the way.
Oh, yeah.
It holds up. Everything about it holds up. The only thing that is probably different is the quality of movies and things that they're making now. So we had a guy here last night that was in town and, uh, he, he's not in the entertainment industry. We, we had a separate meeting about, um, media company or whatever, and, uh, he'd seen a movie that, that I had wrote and directed, and he goes, let me ask you something. What did you think of the new, and this is no lie, he goes, what did you think of the new Aladdin? And I was like, I would never see that. Um.
Right.
And I have children, and I would never see that, because the old Aladdin was perfectly fine.
Right.
And, uh, he goes, oh, shit, really? So like, you guys don't go and see these thi-? And I was like, no, man, I live there and they're just remaking everything at this point and just rebooting all of it. So I was like, I don't, I'm not really gonna jaun, you know?
Yeah.
Jaun on out to the theaters. Just took a jaunt out to the theaters to go see Aladdin with Will Smith, you know? Um, but he was, he was pretty surprised by that, and I, then the other part of me, like, when he went to take a piss, I, I was like, shit. I mean, that movie did make over a billion dollars, right? So there, there is definitely people going to see this a lot in America. And maybe I'm just not gonna cave into the, the whole remake aspect of it.
Yeah, no, you're not, you're not doing it.
I'm not gonna do it, right? I'm not, I'm not done with that. Um, and that'll bring me to my revolutionary figure of the day, and this is a total accidental segue that is awesome, and it just happened to work out like that, Japes. You do nine hundred shows, sometimes it just works out like that.
Blamo, blamo.
Carrie Elwes is my revolutionary figure of the day. Um.
He is Princess Bride guy?
Correct. Yes. Um, I'm gonna pull up his quotes here, um, that exploded on Twitter. So they're trying to fucking remake Princess Bride.
Oh, God.
Yeah. And, I mean, it, let me find it, it, like, it sent people into a rage, actually. This was the only movie, by the way, that everybody raged against, where it was just like, no.
Yeah, no.
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 Um, and I thought his statement was perfect. I mean, just absolutely perfect. Short and sweet, and he just said, uh, cause Variety had, was the one who, and if you don't know Variety, it's them and Hollywood Reporter, they kind of break all the news stories in Deadline dot com, uh, for films. Uh, so it said Variety, Sony Pictures Entertainment CEO said, uh, there's very famous people, whose names I won't use, who want to redo The Princess Bride, and I think that's gonna be a thing, right? And outrage happened online, uh, and Carrie Elwes wrote, there's a, there, there's a shortage of perfect movies in this world. It would be a pity to damage this one. And that was it. And I was like. Fucking A, well said.
Kind of an asshole, but.
In real life, yeah.
Yeah. So it is a very egotistical thing to say, but someone had to say it, right?
You know?
Like, I wish it was someone else.
It, it is though, but it is, it is a perfect movie.
It is a perfect movie.
It is, and it is impossible to make a perfect movie. And this movie, to me, still, I mean, it was on.
I would be just as pissed.
A couple months ago, we watched it with our kid.
I would be just as pissed if they were trying to remake Swingers, right? Or, like, other movies that, to me, are perfect.
Yeah.
Just the way they are.
Yeah, man. I, I just, uh, uh, Swingers is, is probably that movie for me. Don't touch that. Don't ever, ever touch that. Um, and then, yeah, Princess Bride. Look, there's a, there's a bunch of them, but, uh, those two are the ones that come to mind in the immediate sense, you know? Obviously, they're not gonna remake like Shawshank Redemption or anything.
They can't remake Princess Bride, though.
I, I hope not, man. I really, really hope not.
Like, who's gonna, like?
You know, they would get somebody from, uh, like The Undertaker from, uh, WWE. Dead serious. He fits the bill. Yeah, Kali. So I, they would, they would, look, they would find a way, Japes. I can promise you that. They would definitely find a way.
Yeah.
Uh, and the, but the weird thing is, is like Robin Wright pen, or she, I don't know if she, she kept it after the divorce.
She got.
Just Robin Wright?
Yes, got rid of pen, for sure.
Still doing shit.
He dropped that.